Isn't that Chris? So we're at...
Hennessy Crew were told by John to decide this.
You don't want to.
If people were alarmed...
We got here.
You know, you're right. I can't believe you would say that. I would never say that. I said, "We have a duty," and I couldn't discuss it with them.
Right?
Yep.
All right, then I am going to unmute.
I'm going back. Mayor, you got your coffee, right? Go ahead.
I do. So let's see, what we got? I'm looking for my invocation. Is Karen Butler on the call?
Yes, I'm on.
Oh, okay. I didn't... Oh, right in front of me, Pastor, right in front of me. Very good. All right, since you're here, then we can get things started. We will call the January 4th, 2021 council meeting, the city of Lincoln Park, to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and which will be immediately followed by the invocation by Karen Butler of Wings Deliverance Ministries. Get the flag here. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Father, in the name of Jesus, we petition you tonight, first, to ask you for forgiveness for anything that we've done that might offend you, so that our prayers would not be hindered. We want to thank you for being among the land of the living, for how you brought us through 2021 in the midst of a serious pandemic. God, we thank you. We thank you. We thank you. We ask you, God, that you would bless the mayor and the city council members, the workers, and their families and friends. We ask for comfort for the Terensky family in the passing of Joe Terensky, a longtime resident of Lincoln Park and supporter of city government and politics. We pray, Lord God, in this new year, that you would continually bless the city of Lincoln Park and its government, helping them to make the right decisions in behalf of your people. These blessings we ask. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. It was nice to see you again. So we could go to roll call, please.
What's the person's reading? Is it here? Dupre?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salsedo?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Tarns.
Here. And shortly before, it was just notified that also we had another death in Lincoln Park. Longtime resident, somebody that's been on the Board of Review for a long time, and daughter of our former treasurer, Barbara Porath, has passed also. And our condolences go from all of us to her family as go through. She did... The Board of Review is really a thankless job, but she just did a fabulous job on that for us. But thank her for that. Joe Terensky was an interesting fellow, an ardent supporter of the Historical Museum. That's where I came to know him at. But this passed, I think it was November 11th, yeah, because it was at the bell ringing. It's a cold day. He was there in a wheelchair and was over. And when it came time to ring the bell for either someone that had served or someone that had served before and was no longer with us, he got wheeled up to where the bell ringing was and had two people supporting him as he went forward and made sure that he rang the bell. There wasn't a special name for... He had a school chum that he went to Lincoln Park High with, and it was at... And then went into the Korean War and his friend was killed. And I cannot think of the name of his friend. But if you go to the Lincoln Park War Memorial, you'll notice it because it is the newest plaque on the Korean War veteran... With the Korean War people that we lost. And it was just important that he went to get that done. He was a very interesting, ardent supporter for the city of Lincoln Park. But both will be missed. I just want to tell everyone, Happy New Year. We made it. 2021, believe it or not. Everybody has their flying cars, right? And all the robots at home? All those things that we were promised from the cartoons years and years ago. And I think that I will basically leave my remarks at that for the time being and move directly into the consent agenda. "Resolved that the following items listed under the consent agenda be approved as presented to Mayor and City Council." One, approved minutes. Reverend meeting held December 21, 2020. Two, attend training, police department, staff and command. Three, attend training, police department, use of force. Four, participation, emergency sewer lateral repairs. And five, adopt poverty exemption guidelines.
I'll move.
Support, all right.
Okay, discussion? The clerk called the roll.
That's the person's Ross? Yes. Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yeah.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarns.
Yes. Just in passing, that Staff and Command School that Sergeant Mel Kowski is going to... When I graduated some 24 years ago from that school, it is a tough training. But it's very necessary and will prepare for her future. So the next item that we have has a cover letter from John Kazoo, our DPS Director. And it's the... In background, "The city currently has a 16-inch water main located along Lafayette Boulevard, just south of the intersection of Lafayette, New York. Lafayette Boulevard ends. However, the water main continues along this course. Placement of this water main near homes and in backyards is not ideal. City desires to relocate this water main. The most obvious course would be to install a new pipe beginning at the intersection of Lafayette and New York. Pipe would head west to Howard Street and then south through Riverbank. The pipe would then reconnect with the existing pipe at Riverbank and Lafayette. City would like to move this project onto the 2021 schedule. In 2020, the Lincoln Park School District completed work at Hoover Elementary School. School District will be restoring Howard Street, and this would be an opportune time to do this project to minimize disruption to the area." And Hennessy Engineers has provided a proposal to complete the survey, design engineering permitting, and bidding services for this project. I just want to touch on what part of Hennessy's instructional letter, this one from James Hollingsworth. And that is, "The project involves the relocation of water main from Riverbank to New York Avenue. The new water main will start at Riverbank and Lafayette, thence proceeding west on Riverbank to Howard, thence proceeding north on Howard to New York, thence east to New York, on New York to Lafayette. And based on utility maps, an estimated cost of relocation of this water main is approximately $1 million to $1,300,000. And due to the complexity and unknowns of the existing water main utilities, the exact cost cannot be determined until the survey design work and the field verification utilities are done, are completed." So the resolution is, "Be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby approve Hennessy Engineers' incorporated proposal for survey, design engineering permitting, and bidding services to relocating the existing 16-inch water main. Be further resolved that the project has been proposed at a not-to-exceed price of $68,500 and will be expended from account number 420-001-983-000."
I'll move.
Hold up, clerk.
Okay, discussion?
The chair, please?
Yes.
I was speaking to the assessor today about one thing. And this is definitely something that must be taken seriously, and with a lot of money. But it's a lot of... It's baked us a lot of other things down the line, other possibilities. As far as... I can't line everything up because, of course, he knows everything. Bob, I don't know if you know, Bob, he tells you a lot. So I couldn't remember everything he said, but it is definitely something that we really need to look at for the city.
Okay.
Through the chair, Your Honor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
You know, my only thing that I was wondering, the placement of this water main near homes and in backyards is not ideal. So my question is, how long has this been in the backyard of homes? And why is it not ideal? That's all I'd like to know. If someone can answer that. I know Tracy mentioned something about it, but...
Well, do we have...
Wait a long time, I guess, that this is... I don't know if I can respond to it. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
The water main itself, the water pipe pre-exists the homes. The water main was there before the homes were built. It's my understanding that there was a... The original homeowners had come to agreement and had waived that situation, and they were going to have it to where an easement was put in. As it turns out, the easement was never put in. And to the... And so it is not a good situation. The water at... And the 16-inch pipe goes at about 65 to 70 PSI as it's going, which is decent pressure. Were there to be a crack or something, or a break that would happen, has potential to damage the homes in the area also. So it's not something that we can choose to take lightly. Once it's been discovered and there is a potential for harm to residents and someone else, then we need to take necessary action. And this is the necessary action that we're taking as a result of it. On the positive side, this is a pipe that has already exceeded its life expectancy as a lot of the water mains and water lines that we have in the city has. And they ended up being that with the school district paying for the actual pavement of Howard, we're coming out on the good means. So in the end, the way I see it, is that we discovered that there was something wrong. There's a potential that it could cause harm to homes in the area, and we need to take the necessary steps to correct it.
Thank you very much.
All right. John, are you on the call? John Kazoo?
Yes, sir, here I am.
Okay, is that...
Yes, sir, here I am.
Yes, sir, is that... You hear my comments, or are those pretty much as it relates to that, true to that?
Mayor, you did an exceptional job in your explanation.
Okay. I don't hear that often, but thank you. So do we have further discussion? Then hearing none, clerk called the roll.
Counselperson's Ross? Yes. Tobin?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarns.
Yes. So the next item that we have is, "Resolved that the council claims payable for those items greater than $25,000 be approved as follows." This first item has had the check released for the due date. That's Blue Cross Blue Shield, January 2020, retiree, med, advanced plans, retirees and actives, City of Trenton, second installment for Tyler Software for PD, Dan Kay's Yard Restorations, $30,418. District Court, Jan. 2021 Monthly Payment, $49,255.17. MERS, December 2020 Defined Benefit, $219,405.34. Very good. Do we have discussion? Then clerk called the roll.
Counselperson Higgins?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarns.
Yes. Now we will jump into the city manager's report. James, Mr. Cruzan?
Thank you, Mayor. Much like you, I will keep my comments pretty brief. This is our first meeting since the holidays and the short weeks, so it's been a relatively quiet few weeks around the city. Couple of things of note. We may have... I've gotten some questions about some stuff on the website over the last couple of days. We've been having a little bit of issues on the backend of the website that we're working with the vendor to resolve. It's causing issues when we try and upload some stuff into the calendar and a few other things. So hopefully we'll have that resolved soon. And then we are beginning the process of trying to reopen at least City Hall fairly soon. Looking at being able to take in-person payments and open up, very similar to the way we did as we opened back in June of last year, with limiting the amount of people that come into the building. There's going to be some new processes when we reopen. And it may take some getting used to for both residents, visitors, and as well as staff. So look for that in the coming weeks. Hopefully, as we see this vaccine spread and people get inoculated, we'll be able to send there soon, have some in-person meetings again. The virtual meeting extension goes so far until the end of March. I anticipate we're still going to be in a situation similar to this over the next few months. But other than that, I'm happy to take any questions anybody might have.
You're on, Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
James, since the calendar, the information on the calendar isn't there, can you think of any meetings this week that we should be aware of? I can't think of any.
Sorry. Right offhand right now, I can't think of any.
I know that the EDC meets on next Tuesday, and then the DDA meets next Thursday, but I can't think of anything coming this week.
The Library Commission meets on the first Thursday. Okay. At 7:00 PM.
Yeah, I see that.
The seventh.
Okay, when does... Is planning meet on Wednesday, or do they meet on the second Wednesday? I can't think of that.
Planning Commission should be on the second Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday.
Yeah.
And the second Tuesday is DDA... Or, yeah, I'm sorry, EDC and the second Thursday is DDA.
Yeah, I think we should be... Aside from Library Commission, I think we should be okay for this meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Through the chair, Your Honor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
One quick question, person manager. Most of my questions that I give are normally from residents, so that's why I ask. In regards to the old blockbuster building on Fort Street Demons, I want to say it was last fall or early 2020, where somebody was moving in stuff, getting his resale shop put up, and then some red stickers showed up on the door, and I haven't seen hide or hair from him again. Do we know why that business is not open? If someone can answer that?
So the business does not have the certificate of occupancy. And Jim Myers is on the call. I would probably defer to him specifically as to why that is. But basically, the site needs to comply to the commercial code before any new tenants will get a certificate of occupancy. Mr. Myers, do you have anything else?
The manager is well spoken, accurate, and effective. The code that has been ready for the owner of the property to comply with the city's guidelines is the commercial code, and that is exterior upgrades and satisfactions to public satisfaction conditions that are working out at present for the last year. We have restricted, according to the city ordinances, all rights to new businesses opening until parking, fencing, and dumpsters and exterior building repairs are met. And we are in litigations at this point to confirm that they will close. Until then, we have not permitted any new businesses to have a certificate of occupancy and open their doors.
So my last question is, with America's best, we got the toy store there, General Store, we got ACO, we got HR Block. Those businesses remain open, so is this like a... You said new business, right?
It is correct.
This is why it stopped. All right, thank you very much. So I'm here.
Yes, go ahead.
As long as John Myers is here, I'd like to ask, how are our building inspections? Are we up to date? I don't know where we're supposed to be. I've had a couple of businesses ask about their inspections. I just want to make sure we're up to date with all the COVID rolling out and everything. We're already set with the building inspection.
We are pretty much up to date. There's a few that are lagging along. Many are struggling because they're not used to using our BSNAs as an online application system. The ones that you mentioned are requested, particularly in last week. The Building Department is in compliance for their CBOs. The Fire Department is not, which is not part of ours, but they have to meet the fire decode for a certificate of occupancy. So I can't think of any that we're dragging behind at all on our commercial businesses at this time. Thank you.
Okay, anything further from council for the city manager? All right, thank you, James. Then at the last meeting, brought up that it was time to bring the department heads back or hear from the various departments for a department head report. And I guess we're starting with A, and that would be assessing. So we have Bob. I'll turn it over to you if you are ready. I see Kathleen here also. He's unmuted. He's ready to go.
First, for this staff, I'd like to introduce you to the assessing staff. Nancy Nutter is the assessing clerk. I believe she's there somewhere.
She is. She doesn't have a... We don't have her on video, but we have her on blank screen.
Katie Bolt is the city appraiser. She was a former appraiser, I believe, in November. And my name's Bob Grazio, and I'm the city assessor. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your kind words about Barbara Porath. And you're right, it is a pretty thankless job. And we will really miss her wisdom, her sound judgment, and her humor. That's a position that we need to fill, and we also need an alternate because we only have two numbers out of the three. And so we're kind of hurting for somebody. If anybody has a suggestion, please let us know.
You might, as part of this, Bob, talk about the qualifications for the Board of Review, if you can just do it in passing.
Sure. What we really need is maybe some real estate experience or some building experience or just life experience in buying a lot of homes. The most important thing is to be willing to deal with the intricacies and the problems that the Board of Review deals with. When they're dealing with hardships, they're dealing with people perhaps at their worst. It's a very difficult thing. And I am real happy that the proposal I took that responsibility away from me. I used to be the assessor that made those decisions, and I'm real happy that the Board of Review does now. And you have to be willing to put in the time. These meetings are long, they're hard to us, and nobody really wants to go see the Board of Review. And they're not happy when they do. These are people that are either appealing a value, dealing with a hardship, a veteran's exemption, or some other issue. And a lot of what we need is patience. And that's something that Barbara had in spades. She was great with people. We've got a really good, really sound base for our Board of Review. We just need to find a couple more people that can back them up. Starting in '22, the Board of Review will be required to take education by state law. That's something that came up a couple of years ago, and it's being worked on right now. And that's to give them better background because the Board of Review changes come fast and furious at this time of year. There's probably a dozen of them out there that we haven't gotten any opinions on from the State Tax Commission. So we're not even going to deal with them until we know what it is that we're supposed to do. But they're left changing the law, especially in December. And our first Board of Review is in March. So it would be really nice to have somebody that was interested and had the time. This is... Can be time-consuming for the March Board of Review. Happily, lately, we haven't had long ones, but in the past, they've lasted a month. I don't know if you remember that, Mr. Mayor, but yeah, they used to be pretty bad. So if we can get somebody that's interested, that has some kind of real estate background or building background, or like I said, has just bought a lot of homes, perhaps somebody that has a lot of rental homes. That would be really helpful.
So we need two people though, right? We need two.
We need two. We need a primary and we need an alternate. And generally, this time of year is when we're at our busiest. Right now, we're processing sales. I don't know if all of you know, but all three of the people in this department got COVID. One of us was hospitalized for a while. So we're working on recovering. We have a huge amount of sales that we're processing, plus new construction, plus we had to do a personal property canvas. A lot of work to do. And just to give you a background of what we do, we have to put value on every piece of property in the city, real and personal. So that's what we're doing right now, is we're developing the land values. We're developing the economic condition factors. Everybody thinks that ECS are some kind of magic. It's not. It's just an adjustment to a book that we're required to use. But it's a statistical correction, so it looks pretty impressive. And we have to go out and visit a lot of places still. We haven't been able to do that up until recently. And so that's something that we're working on. We also have to do an inspection of all the exempt properties, and I think Katie's in the middle of that. So yeah, we're really busy. So yeah, we're really busy, and if anybody wants to come down and see what three crazy people look like, this is a good time to do it. Once we assign value to things, we send out notices. Those come out near the end of February. We turn in our paperwork to the county, and the county looks at it and says, okay, or they ask and say we've done something wrong. Particularly, one of the checks that the state uses, make sure that we're doing our job as the AMR, and nobody can remember the acronym for it, but it's the auto minimum assessing requirements, and we passed our first one this year. It's a difficult thing to do, mostly because we're not small. Between Valdova and Lake of Park, we've got over 22,000 parcels. That's 22,000 properties that we have to keep our eyes on, and that number keeps growing as we find things. So that's kind of where we're at. If anybody has any questions, feel free to throw them out.
Open it up to counsel?
Through the chair, please.
Yes.
I had one just speaking earlier, and it didn't come out here, but people that you meet for the board, do they need to be Lincoln Park residents?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Are you actively putting newspaper ads, internet ads out there for anybody here in the city to get a job?
We have not, we have not yet. This can have struck us by surprise, and like I said, we were all COVID bound, so we were pretty much isolated. So we will be doing that. What I really want to do is get it on our Facebook page also. So yeah, we'll get it on our website too, once that's up and fully functional.
Very good. Anything else for Bob?
Just like to say from all of us, I'm sure we're just a little back and healthy and doing good.
Thank you.
Gus, we appreciate all you guys' efforts. You've done a great job for us, and what's it been, a year and a half, or is it longer than that already?
Year and a half.
Oh, very good. Mine's still working a little bit. All right, thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Then we will move on to citizen communications. We have, James could unmute the folks, and is there anyone that would like to address counsel?
I've already hit everybody on my end.
Okay. Again, is there anyone that would like to address counsel?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can, I'm just.
Okay, this is Shannon Key.
There you go.
Just to make sure I can be heard first.
Yep.
I just wanted to say, we just finished up fantasy land. I know we didn't open this year, but we did it virtually, so I just kind of wanted to give you guys a little bit of how that went. It went very well, in our eyes. Just to give you a little breakdown, we're virtually in 1,038 homes. We had two school events, and Santa was able to speak with 2,099 children. So for a year that we couldn't open, I think that that went very well, and we kept things going on our Facebook page so people could stay active there, and I just wanted to kind of report that to you guys and let you know how it all went.
Well, we appreciate that, and I'll thank you to Santa for that, because it couldn't have been easy for him. But there are 2,099 children who you guys brightened their holidays for them, so I thank you for that.
Yes. And there was actually three families we spoke to that were out of the country, two of whom were from Mexico, and one of them was in Acapulco, so that was pretty interesting. We're not sure how they found out about us there, but it was a language barrier, so we didn't really ask, he didn't ask a lot of questions.
You made the best of a bad situation, so we thank you.
Yeah, it went very well, so I just wanted to let you, let everyone know, and thank the city for their support of helping us in the building and making it all work, and my husband and Key for putting all the technical stuff together for us. We wouldn't know what to do without him. We had, they had it run down one night, and we were just like, ah, we figured it out, and we didn't miss any, it happened during break, so we didn't miss any appointments. So it all went well, so thank you again.
Very good, Sharon, thank you. We appreciate that, and look forward to next year.
You too, hopefully in person.
Or later this year, rather, right?
Yes, but hopefully in person.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel? Okay, I'm not hearing any, so we will move on to what reports may on counsel. Counselperson Salsedo?
Yes, thank you, I just have a couple of follow-ups, I'll make it brief. Normally, like I said, most of my questions I give to the city manager, he gives me an email response the following day, so I thank you, James, for that. But for the residents that don't hear the answers from the January 7th meeting, some residents were asking about the hotel on Papalus Drive. Last September, he said it'd be up in two months, but after getting with, I think, Mr. Myers, they're still undergoing significant remodeling, and it probably won't be open until spring, so the fall goes well. So that was our answer for that one. The other question was about the animal shelter being open on a Saturday, and once again, this time Chief Myers chimed in and emailed me in counsel that, he said that the shelter has always been open on weekends for appointments. The employees work every weekend and are always, and they always make times available for anyone to make an appointment for adoption and pickups. So he said, Chief Myers says it doesn't make sense to extend the hours at the shelter. During the pandemic, we're trying to limit unnecessary traffic, which I do agree with that. The only thing, as I replied, is on the website, it says nothing about Saturday appointments or adoption, so I would hope that it would go in the website that if you want to make a special appointment on a Saturday, that'd be put in. I looked this afternoon, and there was no mention of Saturdays. Lastly, I had a tire issue, just, I think it was the day after Christmas, I went to park tire, very nice staff, they took care of my problem with my tire, in and out in no time, and I think that's why they got a word coming. And that's all. Happy New Year to everybody, and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselwoman Higgins?
I want to talk about our friend Joe. There was nobody who loved this city very much. He was always there at the museum, he was always at every state functions, and he always knew where he stood, Joe. There was no doubt in my mind. He told you exactly how he felt, and I just wanted to say, we're going to miss you, Joe. We really are. And that's really all I have for today, but to say, Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, sir. Counselwoman Tobin?
I don't have much to say. I hope everybody enjoyed their Christmas and their New Year. I hope this is a better year for all of us. It's quiet over here, and I'm just looking forward to things moving on, and getting back to normal. I also would like to say about Joe, he was at just about every concert for years, and I always had time for him, and he always made time for me, and he will be sorely missed. I will definitely notice that he is not around anymore, so all the best to his family and his friends. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselwoman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think tonight I just want to thank GFL publicly for a very prompt resolution to a resident issue that I was working on. So thank GFL, thank you again. That's it, Your Honor.
Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am. Counselwoman Dupre?
I'm a little more serious now. I would like to address the subject of our city's reputation being hard to deal with for businesses. I've heard it for many years. My father opened a business here 15 years ago, and my sister talks about it constantly. But I went and looked online, and we do have how to open businesses in Lincoln Park. Everything is very comprehensive, it's out there online, step by step, which I was very impressed with, and I've opened businesses all over downriver for my dad, so I've dealt with Southgate River University, all, everybody. I'm wondering why it really has the reputation to be so difficult, and I'm wondering, is perhaps I'm missing something? Is there someone that is educating them in the whole process that they could maybe sit down with counsel or me, or if that happens, or so, and explain where the bottlenecks and the trouble is coming from? Because we have a lot of complaints, and I did talk to business owners, I've talked to many citizens, existing business owners, and it's a huge concern, because we want to be so business friendly, so we're not so financially dependent on the residents. And so I'm wondering, is there someone that you can think of, or counsel, that, or the city manager, that could possibly help me understand this a little bit better?
Well, it's, I would suggest that you talk with Mr. Myers first as a department head, and then sit down with James after that, and then maybe that, you're looking for historical data, so it may be people that, some of the department heads that have been here for a little while. And it may be Kerry that you might want to talk to, and maybe our treasurer, or even counselwoman breeding that may be able to assist you on those.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'd also like to tell everyone Happy New Year, and have a wonderful night, God bless.
Thank you, ma'am. Very quickly, the Lake Park Community Credit Union has been a great partner to us over this past time with everything that, I mean, with our offices being closed and their ability to accept payments for us and such, and they're really carrying the load for us. So I just wanted to make sure they know that they're appreciated, their efforts are, and that's part of why we need to get open here, is because we have a lot of payments that are coming due in February, and we need to be able to receive them. We shouldn't have to make people wait, and so we need to start opening up our businesses a little bit more. Anticipation of the businesses opening up, I was talking to Carl Mlisha, our DDA director today, and anticipating the possibility of doing a chocolate walk again this year, right around February, just a little celebration of businesses reopening, spring coming, celebrating life again, and just going in and safely visiting our businesses again, because all of our businesses, as we come through this, are need a shot in the arm. They seriously, seriously do. They, a year ago, you could not imagine having to close down for six, seven months at a time, and how you'd be able to survive that. I'm sure that several of them are still do. So we'll be looking for ways to draw attention to our businesses, celebrate our businesses, and have a little fun in the process as we come out of COVID. And so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. The board, the board.
And if we could, have the court call the roll, please.
Counselperson Salsedo?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Merrick Harts?
Yes. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Would they all be like this here?